Mr. Martinez, whenever you're ready, please take us out of the practice session. Board members, same as previous meetings, please, your phones are turned off. Bring them close to you when you are ready to speak. It helps with the sound. And, Mr. Martinez, if you could just give me a thumbs up when we see a few people logging in online. Wait another couple moments, then Dr. Morthee can maybe get a... Okay, I think we're good. And, Mr. Martinez, again, just give me a thumbs up when we see a few people, but we're going to begin the meeting right now. Dr. Morthee, whenever you're ready.
Thank you very much. This meeting of the Mawa Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestreamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so via Zoom. The webinar ID for this meeting is 893-3510-4382. And the required password is 178580. Okay? Roll call, Mr. Blaker.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Kismarski.
Here.
Dr. Park.
Here.
Ms. Ziccone.
Here.
Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Ms. Devenero.
Here.
Mr. De Silva. And Dr. Morthee.
Here. Adequate notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on March 9th, 2022, in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Uh, Dr. Park, would you lead us in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will we have a second session? Okay, so we'll skip. Um, agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you're here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. I need a motion to open to the public, doctor? I just, Doctor Kismar, Mr. Kismarski.
Thank you.
Ben! And I need a second. Uh, Mr. Gallo, thank you. Okay, and a motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Copeland and Mr. Gallo. All right, Dr. Jatoro, all yours.
Thank you so much. I have a number of things that I'm excited to celebrate with each and every one of you. So just bear with me. So, our Mawa High School Girls varsity basketball team won the Bergen County Invitational Tournament. That was the first time that they won this in the school history. A sophomore, Kayla Menecola, was selected as the Female Athlete of the Week by the Record for girls' basketball. Our boys' basketball team made it to the state sectional finals. I know a number of you have attended those games. 2022 NJ SIAA Boys Diving Championship was held on Tuesday at Montgomery High School in Skilman. Mawa Thunderbird Christian Batori took third. The ice hockey team won the Big North Liberty Division League Championship. And senior Mark Johnson scored his 100th career point for the boys' hockey team. Most recently, Ryan Kozdruj had his 100th career win and qualified for the state wrestling tournament that took place in Atlantic City. Our winner track, Sienna Cannonberg, is a state sectional champion for the 400 meter. Brayden Lo Massey is a state sectional champion for the indoor track 800 meter. Melanie Gilbert and Adia Mahanti participated in an all-state triple course at the NJ PAC. Robo T-Bird's Team 1672 were semifinalists, the first robotics competition held at Bridgewater Raritan High School this past weekend. Indoor winner percussion competed at Fairlawn High School on Saturday where they performed their show Dreams Capes. Thunderbird winner Guard competed in Maine, which is the mid-Atlantic indoor network, at South Brunswick High School where they performed their show Lost in the Woods, and they got third in the competition. And then six students, Colin Chrissy, Benjamin Gappa, Paulina Griffin, Sohe O'Calli, Tanvi Kali, and Megana Sankar, represented Mawa High School at the NJ State DECA, which is Distributed Educational Club of America Business Competition in Atlantic City. So we wanted to congratulate all the teams, all the athletes, and all of the students who took part in the athletic and academic competitions. We're very proud of them. A special thank you to the Mawa Schools Foundation for being so generous yet again. We met with them this past week. They awarded the school district with 10 grants totaling close to $62,000. Uh, the grants ranged from K through 12. Some of the grants included coding and STEAM experiences at the K-5 level, a school beautification project at Mawa High School, our every-year author visits, K through 8, and technology support for our ESL and special ed learners. So, um, as I said to them in the meeting, and I'll say here, we are extremely grateful for their ongoing support and commitment. We couldn't do, we do each and every day without their tremendous commitment to us. And we just, we strive to make them proud with the products that we put forth with all the support that they provide to us. So thank you so much to the Mawa Schools Foundation. Last but not least, it's not as exciting as the awards and the grants. There's a new drill law that's out now. Um, I'm saying this because you're, the families are going to get communication tomorrow. I just wanted to give some clarification on it. On January 10th, Governor Murphy signed Senate Bill 3726 for school security drills. Um, what it really talks about is, it really focuses on making sure that the drills that are taking place in school, obviously fire drills, but more importantly, our emergency drills, our lockdowns, our modified lockdowns, are age-appropriate. Also, it talks about speaking to our students about, not only the importance of the drills, but making sure that the students aren't startled by these events. So really monitoring the students as these drills are taking place. Now, they talked about you can't use props and things like that. We don't do that here. So then, when they talk about props, they're talking about fake guns and things like that. That has never been a practice here in Mawa, but that's a part of the bill. So I wanted to share with you that piece of information. Something that is new for us is each month we do a school security drill. That's the modified lockdowns and things that I was referencing earlier. When we do those drills, we are obligated to send communication to the parents now. So each month, depending on the school, whenever they do it, when they do these drills, you'll be getting communication from the school stating, "Today, we performed a lockdown drill." The purpose of this is, I guess, throughout the state, there were students who were startled by these events, possibly through the use of inappropriate language along the lines of not being age-appropriate, or the use of these props that obviously rattled the students. So it's important for the parents to understand, this is the event that took place in the school, and if you need to follow up, just to make sure that they're okay. Again, I'll repeat myself. In my tenure here over the last 11 years, we've done our very best to make sure that when we go into these drills, we're talking through that with the teachers and the students. And then the teachers also use that as a teachable moment outside of the drill to say, "This is what we did well. This is what we should be thinking about during these drills" to make sure that we're constantly safe. So you'll be getting communication from me tomorrow as a summary of all that. The district will. And moving forward, starting tomorrow, each school will be sending out that communication. So I just wanted to have everyone aware of that, that new procedure. That's all I have.
Okay. Hello? Thank you, Dr. Jatoro. Um, now, Mr. Blaker, for your report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Morthee. Just one item to report on tonight. Listen on the agenda. Uh, under list and mystery sections is to speak about an update to the board calendar. For members of the board, I've already shared this with you. For members of the public, however, in case you did not see any of the meeting calendar updates or notifications. Our next board meeting, which initially was scheduled for March 30th, has been moved to Wednesday, March 23rd. So it's going to be two weeks from this evening. The reason for that move, as I had shared with members of the board, is due to the change in timing of the governor's budget address. That address in mid-February was changed from February 22nd, its original date, to just yesterday, March 8th. Because of that, that threw the alignment and timetable of us approving our budget, receiving state aid information from the state of New Jersey. That adjustment causes to change our budget, our calendar meeting schedules, so that way we can submit the budget on time based on the new timelines. So just for members of the board, again, as a reminder, our March 30th meeting has been canceled and will now be on March 23rd, and for members of the public as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Dr. Fair. Your report.
Yes, uh, first piece, I just wanted to highlight the asterisks that are on the agenda this evening. 18DE and 18R all relate to coverage that needed to take place last minute. So this occurred earlier this week, and after the, or the initial board hack, it was sent to board members. The second piece I'd like to announce is Ms. Jones Catino, her retirement, 18A. She currently serves as our supervisor of transportation in the district for the past 11 years. Through this role, Mrs. Catino oversees the transportation services for over 2,400 eligible students. Approximately 80 bus routes that service our six schools. Bussing for all schools attending, all students attending schools outside of the district. Joan also supervises our in-house drives, drivers, and manages the maintenance of our bus fleet in addition to arranging the busing for all field trips, as well as transportation for athletic teams. Her knowledge of school bus operations has been an asset to the district during her time with our school district. And on behalf of the school district, we wish Joan all the best in her retirement and many years ahead of good health and enjoying with her husband Peter, their children, and Joan's extended family. On the second piece, I guess I'll be the first to say it. We've now moved to mask optional in our school setting. So we are obviously excited about the shift. We've been waiting a long time. Um, and it's, uh, we've been really excited to proceed in this direction recently. And moving to masking optional is a significant shift to our in-person program and is a move forward that we do not take lightly. So I also want to mention some notations related to contact tracing and where we're moving forward with regards to that topic. Uh, because of the significant shift, we are choosing to continue with our contact tracing with hopes that our transmission rates continue to decline. We will be consulting with our district physician in the coming days to determine if contact tracing should be a mitigating measure that we discontinue in the future based on our local transmission rates. As we all know, in our weekly COVID-19 transmission report that's sent out every Friday, uh, over the course of the last month, our COVID positive cases have been in the single digits. And we're hopeful that this declining trend will continue. Obviously, once we are prepared to discontinue contact tracing, we will reach out to the entire school community and let them know what our path forward looks like. Uh, and lastly, I want to highlight, we've been talking a lot at recent board meetings related to summer school programming for 2022. We mentioned everything from programs related to our incoming kindergarteners through our high school-age students. So we have our summer booster, our summer boot camp, our camp invention, kindergarten kickstart programs, summer music program, extended school year, and safety town. So, um, because we do offer such various programs, we believe that placing all of this information in one place would be ideal. So, um, we've created a website that's going to be launched this Friday. Mr. Gallo, can you just hit the one bank of links? All right, so we placed everything into one dashboard because we felt it was important to provide our school community with clear outlines of each program for our parents because we know, since there are a lot of choices, that it may be a tad confusing if all information isn't in one place. So the following website has been created to do just that, and we'll be launching to the public hopefully by Friday. So I want to thank, um, I want to thank Dr. Govino, who's in the audience. Do you want to wave? All right, thanks. Not because you put a lot of work into this, as well as Ruth Davis, our supervisor of technology integration, as well as our directors and coordinators for the programs. They were able to put together a synopsis of each program. As you click on each link, there's information related to each specific program, as well as contact information for the leader of that program. So if any parents have questions related to a particular program, they're certainly able to reach out to ask any clarifying questions. We have some additional pieces that we're going to be placing up here, like transportation and parent letters. But for the most part, we have everything down. So congratulations to the team, and again, thank you to Dr. Govino and Ms. Ruth Davis.
Can a parent go to this site and register their child for one of the programs?
Yes, so that was the other piece was, um, there was a little confusion in terms of what is like the application or signup process look like, looks like, or even the payment process. That will all be done online. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fair. Thank you, Dr. Fair. All right, my report. Um, I have a very short report today. Um, I also want to mention, I hope the transition is going well to mask optional. And I hope that students and staff are feeling supported in whatever their choice is, to wear a mask or to not wear a mask. Um, I just wanted to say, in honor of Women's History Month and International Women's Day, I just wanted to quote from Ruth Bader Ginsburg. "Women belong in all places where decisions are being made." I just thought that kind of sums it right up. Um, and I'm glad to see so many wonderful women in this administration and at this board table as well. So, um, also, we have Mama Mia coming up. Tickets on sale now. Um, March, it's going to be, the performances are March 30th through April 3rd. That's the High School Musical. And, um, I understand there's Frozen Junior at Ramco Ridge Middle School um, March 25th, 26th, and the sing-along version on the 27th. Are those tickets also already available, Mr. Copeland?
I think so.
We hope so. All right, very good. Um, and that's it. Uh, board committee reports. Dr. Park?
Mawa Access for All, sorry. Mawa Access for All held a number of really interesting events in February, including a virtual Valentine's Day Zoom party and the Night to Shine event at the Plant Church. Um, and they've got two big events coming up at March that they'd like everyone to be aware of. Friday, March 18th is the St. Patrick's Day Dance Party at the Mawa Senior Center, featuring Irish dancers from Ridgewood Irish Dance, a bagpiper from Bergen County Bagpipes, as well as local DJ Scott Rubin. Um, and March 27th, the Sun Rockin' Rollers Live in Concert. It's a local special needs band from Rockland County. So anyone who is looking for a fun night out in March and wants to support Mawa Access for All, those sound like pretty cool events. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Park. And Mr. Copeland.
All right, some of my thunder was stolen, but I'll see what I can do here. Um, all right, since 1995, presidents have issued a series of annual proclamations designating the month of March as Women's History Month. These proclamations celebrate the contributions women have made to the United States and recognize the specific achievements women have made over the course of American history in a variety of fields. And actually, the quote I was going to give was here. Um, March 12th is National Girl Scouts Day. It commemorates the anniversary of the first Girl Scout meeting. In 1912, Juliette Daisy Gordon Lowe organized the meeting in Savannah, Georgia. It's also significant because I also heard that March 12th is also the Cookie Delivery Day in Mawa. So that's something that we could all be looking forward to. Um, St. Patrick's Day is coming up on March 17th, and it observes, observes the death of St. Patrick, the patron saint of Ireland. Uh, the holiday has evolved into a celebration of Irish culture, a parade, special foods, music, dancing, drinking, a whole lot of green. A happy St. Patrick's Day to all our Irish friends and all those who identify as being Irish on March 17th. Uh, the townwide garage sale is scheduled for April 30th, and in-person registration is being held tomorrow, March, and March 15th at Town Hall from 6:00 to 7:00. Uh, please keep an eye out, there are various fundraisers going on right now between Frozen Junior, MSF, various organizations in the school class of 2022. So please keep an eye out for that and support those organizations. Uh, I'm going to end on a fun one for all of us Gen Xers. Uh, tomorrow is Mario Day. For those who may remember, the friendly mustache Mario character was initially released by Nintendo in 1985. Does anybody remember which game it was?
Donkey Kong.
Donkey Kong, yeah, Donkey Kong.
Whoa, look at that, Kyle.
Um, since then, these, Mario's appeared in around 200 different games, and the Mario games have claimed the title of the best-selling video game series in history. In keeping with the Women's History Month theme, Super Mario Brothers 2 is one of the earliest games to feature playable female character Princess Peach. A little useless knowledge for everyone tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland.
Um, and since you have the floor, I will just continue with you because I was going to ask Mr. Copeland to speak on behalf of instruction curriculum as well because we had the Innovation Lab at JK that opened. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend, but several board members did, and maybe they might have some comment, but Mr. Copeland is going to give us a summary report, something that wasn't mentioned.
Yes. So there we go. So recently, Joyce Kilmer School unveiled or had the grand opening for the Innovation Lab, and I want to thank everyone who came out for the grand opening celebration. The room is spectacular. It's absolutely gorgeous. Dr. Bowie, Ms. Adams, and the entire team at JK have done a great job. Um, and you know it's a great job when kids come home and say, "Hey, I can't wait to get into that room." Um, and when I hit, when I was with a bunch of, there were 10 5th grade boys last night at our basketball pizza party, and they were all disappointed. They have not been in the room yet. So that, that tells you something about the excitement at the school, and, um, you know, everyone's looking forward to getting in there. But again, thank you to the district, to the board, uh, and especially to Dr. Bowie and Ms. Adams because they, they really worked very, very hard in getting that up and running. And Kyle, your team, I don't want to forget you guys. It was, it's a long time coming. It was delayed a lot because of supply chain issues, uh, but it was worth the wait. So thank you, everyone who was involved.
Thank you very much. Any other comments on the Innovation Lab? Mr. Gallo?
Well, the Innovation Lab was spectacular. The grand opening was very well staged as well. They had it set up so that when Mr. Bowie was speaking, he was livestreaming through the whole school so that kids were like sort of part of the process. It was very well done. And, um, and it's just an inspiration to start thinking about other areas of the district that could use these types of improvements to support our STEAM-type programs, so. And, and again, it was a, it was a ground-up sort of effort. You know, the local staff was really instrumental in designing and pushing that project forward. Obviously, the logistics part of it, and actually, the building was Kyle and a contractor. But, you know, when, when all those ideas bubble up from, from the ground level, that's where it really takes hold in that school community. And you saw that was very apparent in the, in the excitement of all the people involved. So I think we were very glad to support the construction. For finance facilities, just quick wrap-up, everybody got sort of a synopsis of the effort that we've put into the budget process for the last couple of months. We've had three meetings since February that Kyle has led, Dr. Jatoro has attended as well, reviewing the 2023, 20, 2022, 23 budget. Our budget proposal that Kyle is going to advance to us in the next couple of weeks supports all of our ongoing programs with no real interruption and funds all the initiatives that'll get us to achieve our strategic goals without really a very substantial increase to the taxpayer. It's, um, we're very, very fortunate in Mawa to be able to have the resources to run a top-notch educational program, as well as make progress towards our strategic goals and keep our facilities in the condition that they're in, and also make some improvements along the way. We've been very, Kyle's staff over the next year or two is going to be extremely busy managing a large number of major projects in the district, many of which are already underway. We have the JK HVAC project underway. In the next few months, the board will see the, be asked to award several projects related to the replacement of the grandstand, the track, HVAC project over at Betsy Ross and George Washington, and numerous other projects that are all enhancing the educational experience of our students and making our schools more comfortable, especially in the HVAC world. So I want to thank all my committee members and for Kyle and his staff and Dr. Jatoro for participating in the budget process. And tomorrow, I think, is the day we're going to find out about state aid figures for us. So we'll see how that goes. But I want to thank everybody who participated in the process.
Thank you. Mr. Gallo. Um, do we have any other board member remarks or additional comments? And Mr. Kismarski?
So I just wanted to take a quick minute. I just wanted to recognize that, uh, the other night at the basketball game, we had our, I think, the youngest Thunderbird ever attended, with Dr. Park brought a new baby. Which I thought was crazy because he was up in the student section. But just a note on that.
He was wearing all black.
I just want to, uh, I just want to congratulate the, the boys and the girls, I keep forgetting as far as they did. But I definitely wanted to send kudos out to the students of the high school who attended that game. There is nothing worse in this world than losing to Ramsay, especially in the stadium. But the way they conducted themselves and the sportsmanship they showed and dealing with the rather chippy Ramsay fans in the parking lot afterwards, they, they held themselves to honesty, and they should be proud of themselves, as well as the teams. You know, it was unfortunate, but it was a good game. So it was a good run, and we look forward to what's next. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, uh, let's move on to old business. Do I have a motion on the minutes? Uh, Mr. Denise, a second by Mr. Copeland. Mr. Blaker?
Uh, Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Ziccone.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Ms. Devenero.
Yes.
And Dr. Morthee.
Yes. Okay, let's move on to new business. Other, wait. Should we take A through... R? Motion, Mr. Kismarski, second by Mr. Copeland. Any questions? Okay, Mr. Blaker?
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes, except on 17A, I'm extending from checks 105906, check 105989, and check 106048.
Thank you. Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Ziccone.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Ms. Devenero.
Yes.
And Dr. Morthee.
Yes. Okay, let's move on to new business personnel. Did you want to take a separate, Dr. Fair? Do you want me to do that separate or?
Sure.
Retirement, okay. Do I have a motion on the retirement of Jones Catino? Um, Mr. Gallo, a second by Ms. Ziccone. Mr. Blaker?
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kismarski.
Yes.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Ziccone.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Ms. Devenero.
Yes.
And Dr. Morthee.
Yes, and thank you for her service to our district. Um, let's move on to... Let's move on to 18B through, who gets me there? U, B through U. Again, Mr. Kismarski, do we have anyone else raising their hand? Mr. Gallo, a second. Thank you. Oh, it's X. Okay, that was Dr. De Toro. Okay, X, X. Oh, we missed like three at the end there. X, all right, thank you. Mr. Bleecker?
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
I have a question.
Sure.
Dr. Farron, R, you mentioned this earlier in your report. Just for clarification purposes, I know these individual teachers will be supporting that science class. Will they be assigned to specific classes or periods, or will they be rotating throughout? I'm not sure if I asked the question properly, but I think you get my point, right?
I think you're asking about consistent coverage.
Yeah, consistent teacher within that one class or period?
Yeah, so what this looks like is, the reason there are a number of teachers is because we're moving one teacher into another slot, and then there are teachers covering different areas. So to answer your question, there will be consistent coverage. It's just going to be in science and in special ed.
Right, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I just want to congratulate Coach Kraft on becoming the head of the girls soccer team, high school, for bringing home some state championships in the next few years, back to where they belong.
All right. Mr. Bleecker?
Okay, so this is for items A to B through X. We have a motion by Mr. Kismarski, and a second by Mr. Gallo. We'll call Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kismarski?
Yes.
Dr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Sacco?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Ms. Devenaro?
Yes.
And Dr. Morthe?
Yes. Okay, public questions or comment. Public participation at board meetings is in accordance with Bylaw 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Motion to open to the public, Mr. Denise, and a second by Mr. Copeland. Open to the public.
Hello. Hello. Luke Theodore. I had an excellent conversation with Dr. Toro yesterday. Thank you for the call. He clarified a lot. But one question I had after the conversation that came up, are there any other mandates, obligations that Mawa School Districts has to do in order to be in compliance with COVID-19 rules? I know that obviously the executive order got lifted on March 7th, and there was a whole, I guess it was originally the Road Back, and now there's a Road Forward document. Are you still obligated to follow anything as far as COVID-19 mitigation in those documents? Do you have carte blanche, or are you still being obligated to, basically is the question?
Along the lines of the mandates, as you and I were discussing the other day, most recently, Ms. Rizzo and a number of the nurses sat in on a webinar that was done by the Department of Health. During that webinar, the Department of Health shared that a large number of those mitigating measures are now recommendations.
Right.
So along the lines of what we have put in place with the distancing and the cleanings and stuff like that, those are just what they recommend.
Right.
But the mandates are not there in place.
Yeah, the 19-page document Farmer Health put out, you're not obligated to follow that. I just wanted to clarify that. I mean, I know you are, but...
What specific parts, what specific parts you...
Well, so they put out a whole 19-page document on their recommendations on, it was wide-ranging, on vaccination, on boosters, on cleaning, on...
I understand what you're saying. So testing is still a mandate? That's something that...
So teacher testing is...
Teacher testing is still a mandate?
Is that the one thing off the top of your head you can think of?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Theodore. Okay, motion to... Oh, it's Ryan.
Good evening. Again, spoke about this before, about the unvaccinated students and the vaccinated students being treated differently. Just this week, New York Times put out an article, if you guys read, about the ineffectiveness of the vaccine in young children, 5 to 11. After one month, it dropped to 12%. I don't see how we're treating those kids differently than other kids. New Jersey, Bergen County, as of March 7th, the number of, as per Mayo Clinic, the number of new cases per day is 135.7, which is only 14.6 per 100,000 residents. And we're talking about small numbers, that's in the entire county, obviously not here. I don't see why we've kind of forced a lot of parents' hands into getting vaccinated, vaccinating their kids to be treated like better, quote-unquote, and yet still, it's now been proven that it's not effective. I don't think it's fair that we're treating certain kids differently. And moving forward, now that we have a little bit more leeway on what we're allowed to do, just take it into consideration, I hope, to make an improvement on those unvaccinated children.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan.
Hi, Bill. My name is Sue. First board meeting. I just had a couple of questions for all my staff, just a little bit. I've never attended a board meeting. I'm actually here...
I'm sorry, ma'am, we need your address as well.
I wrote it down.
Okay.
Yeah, I did write it down. I'm here on behalf of a bunch of parents, there's a group out there, and there's been a lot of questions, a lot of stuff going back and forth, so I've sort of elected myself to kind of get some of the questions answered and compile them in one space. And there's just a lot of people that, and again, please forgive me, I'm somewhat nervous, but I just, for the sake of our kids, I just want to try to see if we can't come, you know, and just try to understand. A lot of us don't know what, in fact, what are the rules, what are the policies with the board meetings? And I guess the biggest question we have is, I guess this is for you, the president, is there a way to, and again, I'll do it, but maybe compile the questions that they want answered and get a different meeting? It obviously can't be done in three minutes, but there are questions that they want to get answered, but yet it can't be done here in a three-minute session. Questions that, you know, we looked it up and we said, okay, do you, do they, in terms of your rights as a parent, do you get these answers from the board? Is it, does it go further than a teacher? Like, examples?
I feel like I have not a reference point.
Okay, so I can...
In relation to any specific topic?
I can give you examples, yeah. But is that some...
I don't like to refer to you as Sue, and if you want to give your last name?
Sure, sure, Belluardo.
Belluardo.
So I...
So Miss Belluardo.
Yeah, sure, you can call me Sue, but I myself have had some issues lately with my kids, and there's a big disconnect. So my issues aside, I would love to get those answered as well. But in terms of the actual issues that are going on, we, I went back and reviewed, as I said, I've never been to a board meeting, and I went back and reviewed some of the questions that have been asked and some of the answers. And I guess then, I looked things up and I said, well, does the parent actually have the right to ask that question of you? Is this something that they're allowed to be privy to? Is there something you're supposed to provide? And the parents just don't know. And then I'm watching the back and forth and everything going on, and I, it just, it, it's not, it's not okay, you know, because there really is, they really don't know these parents, they just, they don't know. And do you, should I expect to get the answer from you? It's an answer that, in terms of curriculum, that's one example. I went back in the meetings, I said, okay, you have all these questions, people are complaining. I went back and watched the parents in the videos ask the questions from way back, and I looked at the videos. I've done my due diligence, so I, time is money, your time is precious, I'm sure you work, you all come here, it's a long day for everyone. Should I expect that you answer these questions about curriculum? Is there, what is your responsibility, you, the board? And I think I've gotten the answers in terms of who does what, who's responsible for what? Do I, as a parent, have a say in the curriculum? Do I get to look at it before my child goes into that grade? Or should I just try to get it answered here and then walk away complaining when I don't get my answer? And that's, I guess, what I'm trying to stop. So I've read, you know, reviewed the videos. Parent comes here, they ask a question, going back from July 28th, actually, is where I started saying, this doesn't look right. Questions asked, Mr., I'm, excuse me, Dr. De Toro, questions about the curriculum. Everyone wanted to know about diversity, equity, inclusion, social, emotional learning, all of this stuff. They were told, there's no such thing, we're sprinkling it in. That's sprinkling it in? What is that? I'm a parent, I want to know, like, what is this? And I, I'm looking back in a telescope, so easy for me to judge. I'm looking and saying, that's not an answer. What is it? I feel myself, I'm looking and I'm saying, okay, I think if the parents would have just gotten their question answered, the anxiety would have went down. Instead, you had a group over here arguing with a group over there. It was unprofessional at best. People, we, Mawa, the town of Mawa, I gotta tell you the truth, we looked like a bunch of hillbillies, it was embarrassing. People are clapping and woo-hoo. This is not what a board meeting is about. It was us that, everybody's getting up and telling, oh, the... Here's another one, a woman by the name of Janet Jensen got up. She starts stating her passion, she's diversity, equity, inclusion, and she said, on public viewing for YouTube, she said for you all, I am thrilled, and I quote, and I know it by heart because I couldn't believe it, I'm thrilled to, you know, announce, my conversations with all of you on the board regarding diversity, equity, inclusion. I said, what? And then you had parents back here asking you, how to get on, how do we get on to these committees? They want, then the committee question was not answered, and she led the parents to believe she's got some in connection with whomever, the powers that be, and this particular woman whose passion and soul, and she's even, she's the director of diversity, equity, inclusion at some major pharmaceutical company, oh, she's the chosen one to be writing, she led the, looking back, I'm telling you that's not true, go back and review your videos, she led the parents over here to believe that she's writing the program with you all. Not one board member interrupted her, not one board member clarified. So she, on public viewing, let everybody think she's had private conversations. Now that I have looked everything up, I know that the board's not supposed to have? I said, I can't imagine that our board would have done that. Then she starts going into suicide numbers, as if her next thing. And she said to the board, I'm urging you to stay the course with this program. Then the other parents got up and started hounding about this program. Dr. De Toro, and from what I'm looking at on the videos, you didn't answer the questions properly, you didn't give them an answer. As a matter of fact, you gave them four different answers in that exact video, not trying to come down on you, easy for me to judge, sitting back here. And I'm trying to be sincere, because I'm looking back in retrospect, but I don't think it's appropriate, I don't think it's good for Mawa. Our videos look terrible, it's embarrassing. Nothing is getting resolved, nothing is getting done, people are infighting, you have Facebooks that are complaining, you know, we should be the ones praising our board, you shouldn't be in your meetings talking about the great things you've done. Your parents, I heard you the other day, and now I'm looking at the videos. Dr. De Toro, you said something about raising money, and you, your specific comment was, we're always looking for, you have a group of these, and I'm sorry if the parents get upset with me or not, you got some pretty spirited parents. You got them on your team to raise money for this school? I can't even imagine if they could take their energies and put them into that. When you were mentioning about something in one of your minutes, it was just something said in passing, but what I'm saying is, we have to get the parents to stop arguing about these programs by lowering anxiety and just getting them answers to their questions, and then they could raise money for school programs or whatever, if we can divert these things.
Can I just address some of the things? Because there's a lot, and I just want to make sure that I'm addressing.
Yeah, there's a lot, yeah, there is.
I just want to make sure I'm addressing it at least throughout. Along the lines of parents writing curriculum, no parents have written any curriculum for our district at all.
Wait, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but what I'm trying to explain to you is if you go back to these videos, you had a parent come up here and say this in public, and you did not stop her or interrupt her.
I'm clarifying it.
It's stated.
I'm clarifying it for you right now.
You should have clarified it, that is my point.
If you would like to have a productive conversation, I can go chapter and verse of what you share.
Sure.
Because I do feel like clarification is needed.
Okay.
No parent has written curriculum for our district along the lines of what you're talking about with what's the answer for DEI? I'm very familiar with those meetings. And also, within those meetings, I shared that there are such, there's such a broad or vast amount of curriculum from K through 12. I asked the parents if they want grade-specific or class-specific understanding of what their students are experiencing, that we can connect with either the building principal or the supervisor, and they can walk them through what that learning experience is going to look like. It would take me forever to sit here and share from kindergarten through 12th grade, here are all the opportunities where this type of contact, content is infused throughout. So along the lines of clarity, if that clarity wasn't provided, allow me to provide that clarity now. At any point, if any parent would like to know what type of curriculum or type of learning experience their child is having, it's most important to talk about grade-specific learning. That's the best clarity that I can provide, being that we don't have a course that's specific to that content. It's woven, I'll say it now, it's woven throughout ELA, it's woven throughout social studies, it's woven throughout a number of different courses that I wouldn't be able to tell you chapter and verse, every single opportunity where it's infused K through 12.
Okay, so I'm not asking this in an organized manner, because my brain is all over the place. Here's the organized question. Can we organize a list of questions? Because here's the question.
Can you organize...
Where do, all of these questions that these parents have, so that it's organized for you all, can you tell us, number one, where do you post curriculum according to your regulations? Is it posted online prior to the next grade? So what I read on the New Jersey State statute says, because I don't want to come in here not knowing anything, it said, New Jersey State statutes, New Jersey Board of Ed, New Jersey State, and then your policies. It said under New Jersey, curriculum is posted by each school district online for parent, and I quote, review slash approval prior to going into the grade for the next year. So that, so then I'm looking on your website hours and hours, I can't find it, so I'm like, okay, that's a question. So that would be, that would be a specific. Then it was, okay, B, I looked on your website, 70% of your website is social, emotional learning. So now my question is to you, why is so, and I'm in the medical profession, or I was, why is so much of your website just... was, why is so much of your website just dedicated, I'm just giving you examples, you don't have to answer them tonight, I just want to prepare you. Why is, and this, again, people are screaming in the streets in terms of your parents, why is so much of this initiative, and it's from the government down, and this is your initiative, social, emotional learning? So I click on it. Here's Sue, never have I done anything with education in my life, and I'm like, okay, I start clicking and clicking, because I don't know anything. And then I'm like, okay, from what I'm reading, you're doing assessments, you're then collecting data.
Can we, can, we've kind of gone to like two, three questions.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is you're talking about weeks and weeks and weeks and months of board meetings where questions have not been answered. So how can we get together and get these questions answered? Or if it's no, it's no. If you're saying to me, listen, we're not, we're not answering these questions.
I can answer this.
Oh, oh, Dr. Scherer, please.
Go ahead, I'd love to hear it.
Whatever questions you have that, that are listed from whoever, the most appropriate way, the best way to get clarity of any of those answers is to speak first to the building administrators.
And I'm glad you said that, I've done that, because you've said that before, did it, no one knows anything. I went through exactly what you said, I went through the whole thing.
So the process is, you speak to the building administrators, if by chance it's a content-specific question, at that point, they will connect you with a supervisor, if there's a supervisor at that level that is content-specific. If by chance you're not getting those answers, you can come directly to me, and we will figure out those answers together. That's the process. Because what's going to happen is, you, you can send a list of questions, in order to get clarity on those questions, we're then going to go connect with the school in which those connections are specific to.
Okay.
Then we'll be able to answer those questions.
Do you post the curriculum, biggest question?
I have, we have a parent login for any parents who would like to access for our curriculum. Our curriculum is housed on Atlas, which is an online website, and at that point, you can search by grade, you can search by subject area, and you can search by keyword.
Okay, all right, so, so to wrap up that piece, I just have two more things, please, I, I ask you for the few remarks. In terms of the, the curriculum, what, we'll deal with that, but the questions from all these parents that have been coming, can we get those questions answered? We went on a macro, I mean, on a micro level to the schools, they don't, I'm sorry, I asked all the principals, they don't know. They don't know those answers, I don't know where the disconnect is. The questions, unless you want me to prepare them and send them to the board, the, the schools do not know.
I, I don't-
The, the questions that, you can review the videos, they don't know.
And I think the best thing for you to do is to send a list of questions that you're referring to.
Okay, and they will, will you at least then tell, yeah, okay. Next question is from the board. What is the policy you-
Can we ask you to, for this to be your last question, Ms. Belluardo? We technically asked that it's one question, and your remarks are no longer the three minutes.
Okay, so may I ask you then, if I have another person here willing to give me their minutes, may I speak for them as well? Because these have to be answered, I'm sorry, if this is painful, month after month.
I'd ask you to have one summary question now for-
Okay, well, this is important, you had a, she's a very nice woman, I thought, come up here and ask you, and I see her, board meeting after board meeting, Mrs. Theodore, so she asked a very important question regarding your, what you've done. You've got the women, or the men too, coming up here about the masks and vaccines, the mask and, she asked you what you've done to look at the data, and basically, what you're saying to them is whatever the board, the state board of health says, is what we're going to follow in terms of where we're going from here. And this question is still not being answered. As a board, as a, you, you, from what I looked up, your government-elected officials, or your, your, we elect you, you, you have a very important role. Do you have a, do share responsibility? If there are guidelines, we all know that you can overrule those guidelines, has anyone at any point, when they, everybody was asking you all the while here, I can't say how painful it was reviewing all those mask questions, they kept asking over and over, have you ever looked at the science that we kept saying, you, you, many times, we're going to follow the science? I'm in the medical field, that's my lane. Because what I want to ask you, the CDC, when they gave their recommendations, those are recommendations, when you have scientists, you, they're never going to agree, you don't want them to, because there's a difference between professional debate and actual looking at data. The data that was used to start the masks has been discredited and removed from the CDC. You, I want to know, does the board ever look and compare and say, we've got a big responsibility here? Let's have professionals in this field give us the recommendation, let's look, you have children's lives in, in, in the balance here, and I'm talking on a serious level, because that's, that's what I, that's my job, that's my lane, okay? I can look at the data, and I've known it since the gate, the original data used, and I just want to tell you this, and I promise you, it will be worth your time. When that, when those vaccines came out, you have FDA, they do phase one, two, and three trials. With COVID, what the CDC does is they weigh out their, it's risk and benefit. They skipped phase two and three trials because people were dying. I'm not saying that it, I'm not a conspiracy theorist, I'm vaccinated, I'm not anti-vax. But here's the bottom line, they skipped phase two and three, which would have taken another 10 years, and they rolled it out. So this, this is a tough-
Ms. Belluardo, have we not moved on, we're now less optional-
Well, this is important, I'm sorry, this is important, because what you've said over and over again is still not answered. Do you independently look at the, the data out there that's out there? Because you have to say, here's, here's the thing, this stuff is all now going to the Supreme Court, school boards versus parents. And the Supreme Court is ruling many cases in parents' favor. This is going to be in your lap eventually. So my question is, do you want to work with people and look at it, or do you not? Do you want to just answer it? Because there's people that can help. Do we look at this stuff, or don't we? This is important, this is not-
I think, I think this, I think, very honestly, at this point, I'm going to say that this administration, this board, has, questions have, this is public questions and comment.
But this is serious questions.
Ms. Belluardo, I, I'm going to say it wrong, Belluardo.
It doesn't matter who said it, but-
No, it does matter, it does matter to me, I want to be respectful to you. This is not, we're now getting into this being a debate, and, and this is not the forum and the platform.
I just want the answer to the question, do you do that or not?
This is not the forum or platform.
How do I get it answered? Do I make an appointment, or do I write?
So I think Dr. Dettoro, it's asked and answered. If you have questions, if you have concerns, then we would have you address it to Dr. Dettoro and the administration.
He's not on the board, he is the superintendent. It's an executive decision, how do I get it answered? Can somebody, you have to answer this question.
You've just been told by the president of the board of education how to get an answer.
How does he answer, he's not on the board.
He is the superintendent of the school district.
It's a question, I'm thinking, thank you, ma'am.
He is the superintendent of the school district.
Does anybody here understand what being on a board is? I'm asking you an executive question, I'm going to get riled up over this, this is very serious.
Hang on one second, one of the questions you asked-
Mrs. Theodore, that, when we come here, month after month, you have never answered a question.
Can I speak?
Yes, I would love to hear it.
You asked, do we look for outside advice? Do we talk to, let me finish this. Let, let me finish. You asked, do we look for outside advice, do we look for professionals? Dr. Dettoro and Dr. Fair has said numerous times that we talk to our medical professionals when they're making those decisions. What needs to be also reminded is that the board is not making these daily decisions. We have put our administrations in a position to make these day-to-day operational decisions. They're, they are consulting with medical professionals to assist them in making these decisions.
He's never once said that, I'm sorry, with you.
He said it tonight.
Just answered tonight.
He's not been here, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know him, I'm sorry, that's true, yes.
That's an incredibly disingenuous statement, if you've watched all the meetings, because I was the president of those meetings, and I can assure you, I was sitting next to him when he did.
I, I'm sorry, did you ever say that you consulted with the medical professionals on your team?
Yes, repeatedly.
Who are they?
Continually at every meeting in the last year.
Because what I kept hearing is, you're going to follow what the state board of health says and that's law.
And I stated those times, up until the 7th of March, we were following state mandates, executive orders.
That's the state, that's not you as an entity.
An executive order is a law of the state which we were following, the fact that we followed those.
No, that's the state, I'm asking you if you independently do that, this is serious.
Ms. Belluardo, can I just, as the superintendent, let me just share with you.
I can't let this go, this is important.
Let me call this to order, because I, I, I think we have, very frankly and honestly, we have been very considerate to your questions, we have given you, I, I was, I've been looking at the clock, we've given you much more than three minutes.
But can I please hear what Dr. Fair has to say, that's his, if this is what he does, I just want to hear it.
And you know what, this is going to be the last answer, and if there are additional questions and concerns, we would please ask you to address them directly, and if there are parents that you feel have accumulation of questions, they are also welcome to email, they're welcome to come to our board meetings and, you know, ask those questions themselves. I appreciate that you want to ask questions for a group or for a lot of people, and I'm not sure you didn't identify yourself as part of a specific group, but you've referred to a group multiple times. So if that's the case, then I request that you state what group that you're part of, because we would appreciate that information. However, we're going to go on, you're an individual, you're making an individual comment.
No, it's not an individual, they just need to be answered, that's the bottom line, it needs to be answered.
Okay, so, again, I think we've given you the path to do that. If you felt that was not addressed on the building level, I mean, it's the teacher level, the building level, the administration level. The board and the board members here, we, our role and job, and I can, at the next board meeting, I will bring our ethics and our, our kind of rules of conduct, we can certainly highlight those again and remind everyone, but it is to support our administrative team in running this district.
Not make decisions, not make decisions.
That is what we've done, that, that is what we've done, yes, regarding decisions, yes. It is to be supportive in the everyday administration of this district, and that is what they do. We, as a board, do not make those individual decisions, daily decisions, we leave it to those individuals that we have hired, and the superintendent is who we hire.
But do you appreciate if you just get your questions answered, how a parent's anxiety would be down, and we wouldn't be doing your research?
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
Say it again?
We have meetings every two weeks, nobody's going to show his questions.
They have, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dr. Fair, can I, I'm attacking you here?
Let me, let me just bookend this.
Yes, I would appreciate that.
I want to state, when we first, when this pandemic began, we were charged with making somewhat medical decisions, and we would overtly preface what we had to say with expressing our frustration that we were not medical professionals. I've often joked that I'm a dude with an English degree.
Right.
And I did that back in when this all started. And since this all started, we were so nervous about making a misstep every single, every single piece of this pandemic. We had people coming to board members, board meetings, mad about any and all decisions. Quite frankly, I was looking forward to this meeting because I didn't have to wear a mask, and I didn't have to sit here and be critiqued at the way I wore my mask incorrectly. And while it has been incredibly frustrating, what I want to share with you is that we genuinely have been seeking medical advice the entire step of the way. You're right, CDC are recommendations, but the New Jersey Department of Health, since the beginning, has been what the doctors and the professionals have been recommending, not recommending, mandating as the rule of law. So when we made decisions, we were following the New Jersey Department of Health, some of that guidance came from the CDC. We have, every step of the way, spoken to our district physician. At one point in the very beginning, when we had zero clue what to do, we had all pieces of this community getting together regularly, from our police department to the DPW to, we wanted to know everyone's perspective, to the Mawa library, and then we also had parents who were medical professionals who we asked to sit down with us to say, like, we don't know what we're doing. And people were coming to the mic with all different types of data. Masks work, masks don't work, right? COVID's real, COVID isn't real. And we were stuck in the middle every step of the way. I was just looking forward to this meeting for us to start over, and I'm really hoping that we can bookend this, and we can. Because I believe that this community is better than what it's been, because I agree with you. People have been going back and forth with such emotionality that we are better than this. We are. And I, I feel like we need to end on that note, because there are better days ahead, and I'm not trying to be corny, but quite frankly, this administrative team, this board of ed, even the people in the audience, we have all been through so much, regardless of what side you're on. I don't want to be against anyone, we're all here to do right by kids, and I hope we have proven that some step of the way. Whether you like me, whether you like Dr. Dettoro, whether you like anyone on this board, we do everything for kids here.
But understand, if there's anything you can get from me aggravating all of you tonight, can you just appreciate if these parents and myself could just get the questions answered? It will just lower the anxiety. That's it.
Thank you.
Just get our questions answered.
Thank you very much, and we look forward to looking forward at this point.
Well, looking forward, you're saying you look forward, just please understand, the questions need to be answered, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm David Boyagi in 82 Walsh Drive, here in town. I was going to make a comment on some of the, the medical issues and policies surrounding COVID, but I've decided, you've probably heard enough of that this evening. I did want to thank you for making masks optional, I think that's very important. I think, you know, just to add to the sense of urgency and lend a word of support to your impending discussions with Dr. Schlemm, the next piece has to be stopping the barring of asymptomatic kids from their schools for days on end. That's a, that's a, that's a practice that I think earlier on in the pandemic, when we didn't have our understanding that we do now, was probably the better part of valor, but it hasn't moved the needle on hospitalizations or deaths in the pediatric population or in the adult population that, that these kids are from. So I just wanted to lend my word of support to that idea and express to you that that is also a big piece of our kids' social and emotional well-being. The reason I'm standing here is because Dr., Mr. Copeland reminded me, I had a question. You mentioned the Girl Scouts in your comments. Scouting movement is something that is very important to me. At the beginning of this pandemic, all of our Cub Scout packs and Grammy troops, they used to meet in our schools, we're told that they could no longer do that. I wanted to ask if there is a continued policy on, on that, or if we're ready to welcome those valued organizations in our town back to schools.
I don't want to speak for Cub, but I believe they are. I saw a Pinewood Derby recently at GW, but-
That was in the school? Okay, great. Yeah, my son's pack, we used to meet at Lenape, and we've been meeting at the Elks Club, but if it's, if it's something that is welcomed now, I guess we would speak to the building-
We can have Mr. Bleeker get clarity on that, but just to confirm.
Great, thank you very much.
And I have a son who's an Eagle Scout, so I would agree wholeheartedly.
You're looking at me, this guy.
Very good, excellent.
So normal building request process?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Bleeker. Okay, motion to close our meeting to the public. Mr. Copeland, Mr. Cohn, second. We will move into executive session at this time, we will then adjourn the meeting from that point, we will not return. So can I have a motion to recess to executive? Mr. Kozmarski, second by Mr. Gallo. Thank you, everyone.